Okay. Time having arrived. It's 3:00 PM on Wednesday, October 22, 2025. We are in the Mayor Bill Coppeta Executive Boardroom on the first floor of 45 Garden Road, Manning Towers, Brockton, Mass. 02301. This is a special session of the Board of Commissioners. This is also a public hearing and all are invited to attend in person or on Zoom. Also, we have included in our agenda the Hearing of Visitors section. Please note that all our board, Executive Board meetings are recorded. This meeting has been posted at City Hall and also on our website. We are in compliance with the 48-hour notice. I am now going to call a roll for quorum. Chair Timothy J. Sullivan here. Vice Chair Ernest Pettiford. I know he's all six.
Yes.
Member Janet R. Trask.
Here.
Treasurer Carol Roberts.
Here.
Assistant Treasurer Taylor Harris.
Here.
We have a quorum. Most of our monthly meetings are held on the last Thursday of the month unless there is a need for a special. This will be posted. Some of our members are here in person and some on Zoom. Because of this, all of our votes will be done by a roll call system. You are hereby given notice that the members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in a special session on Wednesday, October 22, 2025, at 3:00 PM in the Mayor Bill Coppeta Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, 45 Garden Road, first floor, Brockton, Mass. 02301. At this time, I'd read the Governor's COVID-19 memo. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and state of emergency, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20. Pursuant to the order, public bodies are temporarily relieved from the open meeting law's requirements that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public so long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That was extended on April 1, 2021, extended again July 1, 2022, extended again July 15, 2022, extended again to March 31, 2023 by Governor Baker, and extended again on March 31, 2025 by Governor Haley, and also extended to June 30, 2027 by Governor Haley. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance in our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda can make plans for in-person versus virtual accordingly. The public is invited to view and or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Call Meeting app in any app store or at www.zoom.us at 3:00 PM on October 22, 2025. Click on and join a meeting and enter meeting ID number 830-1569-5371, passcode 336423, or use the link http://zoom.us/i/830-1569-5371. You may also join by calling the conference line at 1-346-248-7799 at 3:00 PM on October 22, 2025, and enter meeting ID 830-5969-5371, passcode 336423, followed by the pound sign. The Board Chair will instruct participants on the appropriate time and manner for public comment during this meeting. Would you all please, if you can, remove your hats and silence your cell phones for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the public which stands one nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a replay.
A little delay.
Yeah.
Item one, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman.
Here. Item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 25, 2025. Item A in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
Mr. Chairman and the Board members, I have reviewed the minutes. I have found them to be in order, and I would recommend that they be approved as written.
We need a motion and a second, item two.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. The motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 25, 2025 as written. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item three, Hearing of Visitors. Is there already Hearing of Visitors?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Florinda Keather Leonard of 755 Crescent Street, Apartment 309B, would like to speak on matters regarding the elections, if you'd like to come up.
Mr. Tebow, could you hold, let me read off the Hearing of Visitors policy?
Yes, please.
Hearing of Visitors, any member of the public is invited to speak before the Board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with a name, address, and contact number before the start of the meeting. Each visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The Board will take any issues under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for Hearing of Visitors will be limited to 15 minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing yard, three minutes to another. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Okay, Mr. Tebow.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, for your welcome. I am here to introduce myself as the President of Catholic Towns tenants Association and also a Director of Mass Union. I want to be here to get a feel of what the Board, how it operate, and you know, so that I can be informed for Mass Union as well as for my tenants. And I also wanted to mention briefly about the elections because I don't know, we didn't, I didn't have enough time to speak on it at a meeting we had yesterday with the Rad. So the questions I have, I have put out the notices for tonight's meeting, the council and school, and tomorrow night will be the Mayor's meeting. So I wanted to know whether we, as the tenants association, were obligated to provide refreshments.
If I could answer that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Plouffe is here. And I would ask that, Mr. Plouffe, could you sit down for a couple of minutes with Keifer and go over this for this evening? So, Mr. Plouffe, I think we were going to reach out to her.
I tried to call you earlier.
Okay, so please.
Because I muted my phone. I took it off because I knew I was coming here.
If you could.
That might be one.
Please sit down with Mr. Plouffe, and he'll go over and get you prepared for this evening.
All right.
Many of the people as we can get in the room, that's what I can tell you, because many people are getting.
Well, that's what we, I have gone downstairs, and Commissioner Roberts was there in the community room, and I, although I have had the flyers out, I mentioned everybody, you know, please come out, and this is where your voice is. You can speak to your candidates, so I did that. But thanks again for allowing me, and I, I hope to be here so I can, you know, get myself informed with what is, how the Board works so that I can be a more informed person. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome at any meeting. She has completed her, her comment, Mr. Chairman. He can't see, so I just wanted to let her know I'm stepping away.
Just so you know, it's real hard to hear. I got a really, really. Is there any other Hearing of Visitors?
There is not, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody on the Board have any questions or discussion on the Hearing of Visitors?
No.
Hearing none. We'll right straight to item four, correspondence. Mr. Tebow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two correspondents in your packet today. One is regarding the School on Wheels. This is a pilot program. The School on Wheels has been in existence for a number of years. They provide tutoring to homeless children. They are now doing a pilot program with Public Housing at Hill Street. They've had 17 families sign up for the tutoring, and they will be there. It's every Tuesday evening at, from 6:00 to 7:00. So they were there last night. It's going very well. I wanted the Board to know about that. And then just real quickly, the Housing Authority, and this goes primarily to our facilities people because they're the ones who usually are the ones who are getting hurt. For these liability claims also, we have a low loss achievement award. So our experience has been very good with our insurance, which is so important. We're seeing insurance rates go up by 17%, 20%. And anything we can do to keep our premiums low is important to our operations. So I wanted the Board to be aware of both those.
Does anybody on the Board have a comment on the correspondence?
Nope.
No.
It's a wonderful program that School on Wheels is doing, and I hope many families take advantage of it.
If I could respond to Commissioner Trask, the tutors they're bringing in are fabulous. They are people who know what they're doing, so it really is a great program. It would be a great program for anybody, but they're bringing it to our developments. And it's so nice to see that so many of the people were interested in participating.
Are they going to go to the other family developments also?
So this is an experiment. They'll see how it works. It's off to a good start.
Okay.
Good. I just wanted to say, nice job on both correspondence, in particular the low loss ratio on the insurance claim. Nice job.
Thank you. As I said, it's very important. Mr. Patius is here. I know he shudders when he gets the annual notice of what our insurance is going to be for all the insurances.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can't imagine what it is.
Well, you'll see it. It'll be in the budget coming to you. It'll be detailed line by line.
Okay. We'll move right straight on to item five, Approval of the Bills for the Special Meeting of October 22, 2025. Exhibit B in your packets. Commissioner Carol Roberts.
Thank you. Okay, I have gone over the bills. There were a few questions. They were answered to my satisfaction, and everything is in order, so I move to accept the bills as they are.
We need a second.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. The motion is to approve the bills for the Special Meeting of October 22, 2025 as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item six. Approval of the contract extension for snow plowing. Exhibit C in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
If I could ask Ms. Bruce to speak on this, please.
Good afternoon. How are you today?
Good afternoon.
A three-year contract was awarded to Fairway Landscaping and Lawn Care back in October of 2022. So what I recommend is, it was a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. So what I would like to recommend is a contract extension for one year, one of the two extensions available, not to exceed $150,000.
Anything else on that?
No, sir.
We need a motion and a second on the extension for snow plowing.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the second?
I did, Carol.
Okay, Carol, sorry.
Okay.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. The motion is to approve the contract for the extension of snow plowing at a one-year extension, not to exceed $150,000. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Item seven. Item six is approved unanimously. Item seven, Extension of Contract for Waste Collection Contract.
This is also.
Exhibit B in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
If I could have Ms. Bruce speak on this, please.
Sorry. This was also a three-year contract that was awarded in November of 2022 to Win Waste, and this also has two one-year extensions available. So I would like to recommend that we renew this contract for an additional one year as the same terms to the original contract for not to exceed value of $300,000.
We need a motion and a second, item seven.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to include the extension of the contract for waste collection services for the period of one year at the same rate not to exceed $300,000. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item eight, Award of On-Call Mold Remediation Services Contract. Exhibit E in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
If I could ask Ms. Bruce to speak on this also, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We completed an invitation for bids for on-call mold, on-call, excuse me, mold remediation services for a three-year contract with two additional one-year terms. We had seven responses. The responsive and responsible bidder was New England Trauma Services, and I'd like to recommend we award them a contract for three years with two one-year extensions for $600,000.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $600,000. Forgive me.
Can I get the name of the company again? I got New England. I didn't hear the rest of it.
New England Trauma Services.
Okay, thank you.
And they'll be the ones that we use to come into apartments to when there's big mold issue.
You need a motion and a second, item eight.
So moved, a second.
Taylor, you're the second.
I'm the second.
Who, can I get who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Commissioner Roberts.
Commissioner Roberts here.
Sorry, thank you. The motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. The motion is to award on-call mold remediation services contract to New England Trauma a three-year contract with an additional year at each end for a total of $600,000. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item nine, Review of August 2025 Financial Comparatives. Exhibit F in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
If I could speak on this for just one moment before I turn it over and ask Mr. Patius to speak on it. I think I spoke about this a little bit last time, but I want to say it over a couple of times because it's very important. HUD has issued a number of directives, what they're calling cash management. And basically, what these cash management directives are saying is if you don't use the money, we will take it. The Brockton Housing Authority is in a special situation where we have our moving-to-work status. So what we're doing is moving money out of the federal public housing program into the moving-to-work program, and we're dedicating that to public housing, okay? Or other, other issues. So it's basically moving the money on. But in the comparatives, what it shows up as is a deficit in the federal public housing program, that's AMP 1 and AMP 2, which is usually has large certain certplices. So I will go over that, and I'll answer any questions that you have on why we're doing it. But HUD is doing whatever it can to recapture funds from public housing authorities. So if I could ask Mr. Patius to speak on the comparative.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. So your comparatives cover the first eight months of our fiscal year. All the programs are running according to what we had budgeted. The 689 program is running in a deficit right now, but that's only because of some one-time costs and so forth. So, but all other programs are running as we had, as we're hoping for. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Patius?
Nope.
Hearing done. We need a motion and a second, item nine.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to review the August, review of August 25 financial comparatives as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? I just wanted to say, Mr. Patius, it seems like a real nice job. I know things are a little rough right now, but looks like it's getting better. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You know, and it's a tribute to everyone in the Finance Department, really works hard every day to make things happen so that the financial statements turn out the way they do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice job. Any other questions or discussion on item nine? Hearing done, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item 10, Review of Change Order Number One, Hillside Village Fire Alarm Project. Exhibit G in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
Before asking Mr. Barry to speak on this, I'd just like to make one note. We take our fire alarm systems very seriously. We are responsible for over 2,500, 2,700 people living in our different developments. As you recently saw down in Fall River, there was a fire, and there was loss of life in an assisted living place. There have been incidences in public housing throughout the country where people lose their lives. So this work is extremely important to make sure not only do we have the system, but they're up to date and operating as they should. So with that, if I could turn it over to Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Good afternoon, Board members. This actually change order for the fire alarm system, we're requesting to pull it off. The, this, this was actually part of their project or the scope of work, and it was not picked up by the engineer at the time, and so it will be a no cost to us.
So it's good news. It doesn't even need to be tabled. It's just no action needs to be taken.
Very good.
Tom, did I hear you? No action needs to be taken on item 10?
No action needs to be taken. Chris has discovered that we don't owe them $12,060.75, so we need to take no action. We don't need to table it. We can just move on.
Excellent.
Sounds good. Just so you, it's real tough to hear.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We don't, we do not need to take any action on this item.
That I heard.
If we don't have to table it, we can just move on to the next agenda item. We do not owe this company any money.
I was just wondering, does anybody have any questions or discussion on this?
No.
Nope.
No, no.
All right. Hearing done, we'll move right straight on to item 11. Review of Change Order Number Three, Manning and Bel Air Electrical Upgrade Project. Exhibit H in your packets, Mr. Tebow.
If I can ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, please.
Unfortunately, we do have to support this one. There have, again, been a number of unforeseen or additional requirements from National Grid for the updates to Bel Air High-Rise Electrical System and Manning Tower. The one you'll see, COP number seven was a, called a termination enclosure. It requires, it's required by National Grid because they only supply us six cables. We need 10 cables. So in order to mix them together, we have to have this termination cabinet. That was a very difficult one. We did negotiate this down about $9,000 from what it was originally. The second COP 11 was the new meter socket. National Grid decided they want two new meter sockets over at Bel Air High-Rise, and they did not need one here, so we swapped.